This conference will now be recorded.
Call a meeting in order. Everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. First order of business on our agenda is to elect a chair of vice chair. I would nominate Eric Jennings as chairman. I'll second that motion. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Alright. If there are any negative votes, why don't you roll call today? Brandon's very online. I should add, I came into chairman for the record, we're doing some, obviously some updates to the AP system in here. And so the cameras are installed but aren't working unfortunately. So we need to be recorded, the audio not video. I'd like to thank Greg and Kyle for their input.
I do.
Frank and JT too.
Next up is elected vice chair. Any nominations for vice chair?
I would nominate Commissioner Tisdale for vice chair.
Second. Then moved and seconded by Ewing, seconded by Sleep to nominate Tisdale as vice chair of the commission. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any conflicts that we have today? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed without any conflicts. Next up is to adopt Roberts rules of order and special rule of order. And move to adopt Roberts rules of order by Tisdale, seconded by Sleep. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Proving the minutes is next. Does anybody have a chance to review the minutes? Second. And move to approve by Sleep, seconded by Ewing to approve the minutes from the December 23rd meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills. Anybody have any questions on the bills?
I know.
Moved to approve the bills. Second. And moved by Tisdale, seconded by Sleep or Ewing to approve the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chairman, would you like to just keep everything and sign at the end?
I would like to.
As we go, if you could sign the bill, then that way we.
Yeah, yeah. They never offered me that.
That way they'll process it. Thank you.
Should have done that in executive session with, we'll just do that.
We have a new level of cooperation now with.
New regimes.
Personnel that we need to deal with, Adam Otter.
I like it when it's white. Alright, we'll start. These are all from the sheriff's office. So these are classification change for Daniel Johnson. Correction officer two, grade one, part-time felon employee, effective one twenty-five twenty-six. Omar Anderson, classification change, correction officer two, grade three, base pay of twenty-seven forty-one and needs going to a full-time permanent employee, effective one eleven of twenty-six. Alexandria F. Coloski, classification change, correction officer two, grade one, base pay of twenty-six thirty-two, part-time felon employee, base rate or base rate. Effective date of one twenty-five twenty-six. Alexis Richards, classification change, correction officer two, grade one, she's a full-time permanent employee, effective one twenty-five twenty-six. And classification change for Joseph Cooper. Correction officer two, grade one, base pay of twenty-six thirty-two, full-time permanent employee, also effective one twenty-five twenty-six.
Where's Cooper?
What's that?
Where's Mr. Cooper?
It says in Sturgis.
Sturgis.
Yep, you're welcome.
Move to approve the sheriff's request. Second. Moved by Tisdale, seconded by Ewing to approve the personnel request from the sheriff's department. Any further, any discussion on that? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries also.
And then the last thing I have, chairman, is pursuant the audit from the which side of audit has asked that I always have the emotion to allow, to accept the following 2026 assignment of work at a higher classification, which is listed in our personnel manual in case an input department had what's on choose to do that. I was just asked that I list that in the minutes every year.
Chairman, it's consistent with what you've done the last several years.
Does that just need to be entered into the minutes or do we need a motion?
I need a motion.
Need a motion to approve. Second. And move to approve by Ewing, seconded by Tisdale to us for the assignment of work to a higher classification. Any questions on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Okay, motion carries. We have no.
No travel requests.
Travel requests?
I have none.
We have a correction?
Yeah, the sheriff has, has a new hire. Yeah, I had that. It hasn't been presented this until now, but a new hire. And it would be effective today.
Emergency.
Yes.
Request.
Would it be possible to run that through as well?
Yeah, we have Abigail.
Abigail Crusoe, new hire, dispatcher two, grade one, base pay of twenty-six thirty-two. She is a full-time permanent employee, would be effective today.
Move to approve the emergency request by the sheriff.
Thank you.
Tisdale, seconded by Sleep to approve the emergency request of, what was the name again?
Abigail Crusoe.
Crusoe.
Kate.
Let's call her Abby for now.
That's just call her.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
No travel requests. Otters account with the treasurer.
This is ending out the year of 2025 as of December 31st, 2025. Total amount of deposits in the bank says nineteen million, eight hundred and four thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-three cents. Included in that balance are the bank balance of eighteen million, six hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty cents. And then our money market, one million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, eighty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. Total amount of actual cash, one thousand, three hundred and fifty. Total amount of checks and drafts and treasures possession not exceeding three days, fifty-three thousand, twenty-seven dollars, seventy cents. And then cash, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Penny cash, two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. For a total of nineteen million, eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-three cents.
I'm able to approve the dollars.
Second. And move by Sleep, seconded by Ewing to approve the Otters' account for treasure. Questions on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. You doing the raffle, Brewster?
I will. Mister Chairman, there are two raffle requests. Information has been provided to take in turn the first one is Spirit Fish Veterans Monument Committee. Raffle to be held or drawn on, on May of this year. Promotion to not object to the.
I'll move with. Second. And moved by Sleep, seconded by Tisdale to not object to the raffle for the Spirit Fish Veterans Monument Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chairman, second one is from the Nigel Shriners for an event to deal a raffle to go in conjunction with the Nemo of House races this year. Again, you have the information in your, I guess you'd be looking for motions to not object.
Move to not object. Second. There's been moved by Tisdale, seconded by Ewing to not object to the Nigel Shrine raffle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, we have a letter to the Forest Service concerning cooperative agency status. Mitch Iverson and I worked on this letter. Mitch did much of it. I just kind of reorganized a little bit. We wanted to make sure that we established a timeline and keep that up in front of everybody of the process that the county has gone through trying to obtain cooperative agency status with the Forest Service. Obviously, if you read the letter there, the forest supervisor has made some promises that have not been fulfilled. So we wanted to make sure that we documented that and highlighted that. And also continuing to ask for cooperative agency status. I would ask for approval of the letter and authorizing the chairman to sign.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved by Ewing, seconded by Tisdale to approve the letter sent to the forest supervisor. Any discussion on that?
Others, they've had this change of people in the office, but before that we had to meet just what they wouldn't let the people meet with the natural resource commissioner, who's just very good. Is it the same, very spot, same nail?
No, that, we were doing that meeting with the forest supervisor, district ranger in lieu of cooperative agency status because they would not grant us cooperative agency status. So it wasn't sharing the same information. So it was a different, different deal. This would allow the county to have better access to the data when they start management projects instead of when they finish.
Well, they have had that. The other way, since I've been on the board and that, so. Change of what it's normally has been.
We're trying to reestablish the cooperative agency status that the county enjoyed for five years. Thanks for your efforts. All those in favor of the letter, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Up to elected officials compensation.
This here is a resolution required by statute every year to set the pay for our election superintendents and judges. It did increases ten dollars. That's been set this way for two years, so I increased it ten and then added a dollar to, it was sixteen fifty, now it's seventeen fifty. And just need a motion to approve. That resolution.
Move to approve resolution number zero two six day zero one.
Second. Then moved by Tisdale, seconded by Ewing to approve resolution twenty, twenty twenty-six oh one for elected officials' compensation. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, the resolution for polling places and precincts.
This here is just the resolution, again, required by statute to set the polling places for the year of twenty twenty-six.
Everybody good? It's been moved by Sleep and seconded by Ewing.
Yeah.
We don't have visual, we just only have audio, so you actually have to speak it out.
Well, I didn't have the opportunity.
See, this. Seconded by Ewing to approve the polling places and precincts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Dick, motion carries.
And the next resolution is again setting the depositories for 2026. I did speak with the treasurer, Deb Tridle, and she was good with the list of banks that I have listed on the resolution.
Move to approve resolution two zero two six day zero three.
Second. Thank you. Then moved by Tisdale, seconded by Ewing to approve the resolution establishing the official depositories. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Alright, the next resolution is the planning and zoning fees. And they're all listed in the resolution. And he's made a motion to approve those for the year of twenty twenty-six.
Move to approve resolution number two zero two six day zero four. Is there a change in that from last year?
There is.
She did update some.
Yeah. I don't have the redlined one in front of you, so I'm sorry. Second.
Yep. Moved by Tisdale, seconded by Ewing to approve the fee scale.
I don't have the redlined one.
Amber, we had a question of the fee scale. Which ones were changed? Do you have.
Yeah, I can tell you. I sent the redlined one too, but.
Here, the second. Pull it up, Amber.
It would just be the.
Oh, I need the second page.
The only thing is the actual building permit per fee, so like the finished residential space. Unfinished basements, garages, decks and mobile homes. We haven't increased those rates since twenty twenty twenty-one, I think was the last time we did those rates. So we have a table. It's the ICC code that they put out every year. The last one they did, you know, we didn't, we don't have the twenty twenty-six codes yet. We're still on the twenty twenty-four. And so we skipped those increases because we kind of wait to see, you know, how it goes and what's going on. So it's just time and they all go up by. Did you find it or no?
I didn't.
Okay.
I can keep looking though.
I have the rates if you want me to come back down. They, they, all of them increased to match the ICC code table. Basically, we're not asking. A couple of them, we guessed in between because there were some that were like ninety-five, twenty-five. Well, I don't want to have cents. That just makes it hard to keep the balances. So we kind of updated those. So like eighty-five dollars, there was actually a cent in there. So now it's. I think garages and pole buildings, most of them increased by fifty to sixty dollars. No, that's not the redlined one. So I can run up and get it if you want, actually, but that's. Oh, I was looking at the screen, sorry. But, so it went from one sixty. Oh, so these are the current rate. These are going to be the new rates. So it went from one sixty to one ninety-five, twenty-two to thirty-two. The eighty-five stayed the same, twenty-two to seventy. One sixty to one ninety-five and two hundred to two twenty-five. So the biggest jump was the decks, gazebos, carports, but we were really, really low compared to what it was. No.
You've got other people helping in there too. Besides, a great, great change of.
What do you, staff? Yeah, yep, yep.
A lot should be compensated in there.
That's why we're increasing the rates still.
Mister Chairman? I think the idea behind raising them is to help offset the liquidated cost that we have for Jeff going out there and reviewing things and inspecting things, right? And so I mean, that's the idea.
What's the board? I guess we had a motion, didn't we?
We had a motion.
Did you have a motion? Any, any other questions for discussion? If not, all those in favor of revising the planning and zoning fee schedules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Chairman, the next resolution is the resolution establishing the daily cost of confinement fees for the inmates up at the Public Safety and Services Center. There's only, there was two changes. Time servers and work release went from one twelve to one seventeen, one hundred and seventeen. Other than that, the resolution is, is last year.
Motion to approve. Second. It's been moved by Ewing, seconded by Tisdale to update the prisoner and work release fee schedule. Any questions on that? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
And the last resolution I have is for the indigent burial expenses, and this is the same as last year.
Move to approve resolution number two zero two six day zero six.
And moved by Tisdale, seconded by Sleep to approve the fees for indigent burial expenses. Just one question, why do we have different fees for funerals versus cremation?
So you have the, the option, you talked about this. So most ninety-nine percent of indigent burials are cremations. You left open the option for, for a traditional kind of burial. And it's rare, but people do select that. And that's, I think that's, that's why.
So we're okay with that?
I think you had one, one after burial last year, which is unusual.
Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Does make the legal newspaper.
Move to follow recommendations.
There's no recommendation.
Blackest painter required to do that. You can name more, but yeah, technically.
And motion is second.
Yep, I do.
Who was the second?
Ewing.
Verbally say.
So we're all in favor of letting Sarah off the hook very, very easily. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Black Hills pioneers a designated newspaper. Board of adjustments up next. Who do we want to appoint as the board of adjustment?
Make a motion to appoint county commissioners as we have done in the past.
Second. And moved by Ewing, seconded by Tisdale to appoint the county commissioners as the board of adjustment. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Okay, motion carries. The building code board of resolution is up.
It's currently the county commission. You have never had to act as board of resolution.
What is it if we would have somebody appeal one of Jeff's, you know, something that you did with the building inspection stuff that you, they have a board to come to. We've never used it.
Motion for recommendation.
Second. It's been moved by Ewing, seconded by Tisdale to appoint the county commissioners board of resolution. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You volunteer fire, fighter and search and rescue members. You have a list of them in your pocket.
Move to follow recommendations.
And moved by Tisdale, seconded by Sleep to follow recommendations and appoint the listed firefighter and search and rescue people. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Wages and scales of longevity pay is up. You also have that listed in your package.
Motion for approval.
Second. Moved by Ewing, seconded by Tisdale to approve the wages and longevity scale. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Cell phone per diem. We have the listed cell phone allowances on there for person.
Move to approve.
Removed by Tisdale, seconded by Sleep to approve the cell phone allowances. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Designate sheriff's office positions. You see the listed positions there of, of all, all the positions there.
Motion to approve.
And moved by Ewing, seconded by Tisdale to approve the sheriff's office positions. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sheriff's deputies and correctional officers per diem. You see those listed on the, first to bottom. Second. And moved by Tisdale, seconded by Sleep to approve the supervisor medical doctor per diem that we're going to wrap.
Sheriff's.
Sheriff's deputy, correctional, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's carried. Our supervisor medical doctor per diem. Move to approve. Second. Moved by Tisdale, seconded by Ewing to approve the supervisor medical doctor per diem. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mental illness compensation or board compensation.
Chairman?
Yep.
So the mental illness board gets paid the same rate as the court appointed attorneys and that for twenty-six was set at a hundred and twenty-two dollars per case. And that would be effective on December twenty-eighth. And it's for Judge Borrell, Judge Callahan. And it's for, um, Judge Borrell, Judge Callahan, Tim Johns, Eric.
Okay.
Motion for approval, second.
Then moved by Ewing, seconded by Tisdale to approve the mental illness board compensation for those individuals. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Set the fee at twenty-five cents for printed copies an hourly rate to produce documents.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, this is something new, but it's an attempt to standardize the rate that's charged. Other than those that are prescribed by statute, so for example, in the judge's office, sometimes the statute says you have to charge a certain amount, but otherwise, someone comes in and requests a document, I think everybody's pretty consistent to charge you twenty-five cents per page. But just to have that, uh, set forth as a resolution. And then otherwise statute allows, uh, when records are requested that if it's over an hour's worth of time, I think that an hourly rate could be charged for the production of such documents. And so what we would do is, is usually that would be on a case by case basis depending on who's preparing the documents. And so we would, we would find an average fee and, and apply that accordingly, like that makes sense. So he would adopt that as a rule and as a fee in, in your resolution, that'd be appreciated.
Move to follow recommendation.
Move to follow. And so it's been moved by Tisdale, seconded by Sleep to approve the hourly rate and printed copy rate. And I assume that the hourly rate is, is consistent with the hourly rate that the employee that's looking for those documents.
That's exactly right.
Yep. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, observe holidays. You have a list of the holidays, in your packet. Do we want to do with this? I think we should approve them. Sorry.
Chairman, if I. So, um, I don't know if you want to do this, but last year, um, you made a motion to include the state recognized holidays as declared by the governor of the state of South Dakota as they come about. That way we didn't have to bring it to the board. It was just if the governor declared it and the county got it, that's, that's up to you for your discretion. If you want to add that, you can. If you don't, we can bring it before every meeting.
Mr. Sleep or Ewing?
Uh, I think that's a good idea due to the fact that when the state shuts down, that kind of cripples our offices here as far as, trying to transact business, especially treasurer's office.
It's true. So we, we usually get an email notice notifying us of, of the governor's, uh, that the governor has done that. So what we would do instead of presenting it to you for your further ratification, we will automatically just assume we get those days off. So for example, this last year was Friday after Christmas, right? Um, we would just let everybody know that they have it off.
Move to amend my motion. To follow recommendation by the.
So since we just adopted our rules, we're, we're going to have to do this long way, so. I have a motion on the floor to adopt the holidays as listed, the twelve holidays. We also have an amendment to include state recognized holidays that are not on that list. So first we'll have to vote on the amendment. Any questions on what we're voting on? We're voting on whether or not the county should approve, automatically approve state, uh, added holidays. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion now reads that we will, adopt the twelve listed holidays along with any state, declared holidays as they come along. All those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we got all that now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
For the adjourned holidays. All right, Board Committee Appointments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Uh, all those who are current members have all indicated their willingness to continue to serve. Uh, you do have a letter from Don Housel. Heisley, uh, with his letter of interest.
Okay. And Randy Dybert is also an applicant. Is listed on here, he's contacted me and, and others at the commission.
Yeah, he's, he's listed, yes.
Yes. And do we need to do these on a per committee basis or can we go through all of them and then vote on them all at once?
Your priority.
Okay, let's, uh, fill them all out and then we will approve the entire slate of, of committees, so. Do we want to add anybody onto the natural resource aside from the ones that are already listed? Randy Dybert. Okay, we'll appoint Randy Dybert on there. And all the other gentlemen. Okay. So that committee would then be made up of Holburn, Frederickson, Pearson, Iverson, Jennings, and Sleep and Dybert.
To answer Commissioner Tisdale's question, Mr. Housley was a member a couple of years ago and.
Yeah, okay. We also want to appoint a chair to that committee.
Where does serve your leisure?
Or let the committee select their own chair.
I think Mitch Iverson does a lot of work for this committee and would make a great chair.
Okay. I'll second that. Okay, it's been moved by Tisdale, seconded by Sleep to also appoint Mitch Iverson as chair, the chairman of that committee. They will close discussion on the natural resource committee. Uh, move on to fair board.
Mr. Chairman, you have one expired term and then one applicant, Jody Sleep has applied. Otherwise you'd be looking at appointing a county commissioner, county commissioner alternate.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think Jody Sleep would be a, a very good, uh, individual to have on there.
Sir, second on that?
I would agree with that, I guess.
Okay.
And I would, uh, also, uh, s- stay on as, as the alternate that Mr. Sleep would, uh.
That all sounds good to me, too. Okay, so that's been moved and seconded, so the, that would leave the fair board appointments for Lawrence County to be, uh, Commissioner Sleep is the commissioner. Ewing is the alternate and Jody Sleep is a member. Are we good on that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Lawrence County Housing.
Kelly Pummels willing to do it again, I would say she would be good on that, keep Brandon for him to get on it as well.
Okay. You okay with that, Brandon?
Absolutely.
Okay. Insurance Committee, uh, currently, Mr. Tisdale is the county representative on that, or the commission representative, I should say.
I would make a motion that Mr. Tisdale remain there.
Sorry. Right, we're not making.
Okay.
And then, yeah, I would be happy to stay on.
Okay. Okay, so we'll leave Tisdale on that one. Invasive species, uh, there's, vacancy. Two, two members are vacant and there are in districts also.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, I would, uh, recommend Jerry Cranbeck from the city of Spearfish being on there, uh, due to the fact that he's been a, in the city a long time and maybe he can help us out with getting some more weed sprayed, uh, in town. And I would also be willing to stay on there as the tweeter. And Clint Ridley? Yes.
Second.
And Richard is alternate?
We, again, Richard?
Yeah.
Okay. So that committee will be Ewing, Sleep, and then Ridley for District Two and Cranbeck for Spearfish District. We're good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Mental illness board.
Mr. Chairman, there's, uh, firing terms, Laura, Lori, Lloyd Smith has, uh, agreed to continue on and Chairman Ewing, or former chairman Ewing, Commissioner Ewing, was also, has been serving up with.
Oh, remain.
Okay, I think both would be great, second. Okay, so we'll leave, uh, Floyd Smith and Ewing on that board. Planning and zoning.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, in your packets, and I, I haven't mentioned this with every of, of the committees that you, addressed so far, but in this particular case, I'll address that there were several letters of interest that were provided. Kristen Wing has submitted two, Rod Anderson has submitted a letter, and then Shorty Angus submitted one on Friday as well.
Mr. Chair. Yep. Uh, the way I see this, uh, we really don't have any openings. The openings we have are to, uh, put two commissioners on the, on the board, and I think that's one of our most important boards and, uh, I like the fact that we have two commissioners on there. Commissioner Tisdale's been on there for a number of years, but I think the historical value on that board is, is very important, so. I would, uh, make the motion to, uh, reappoint, uh, Commissioner, uh, uh, Jennings and Commissioner Tisdale to that board.
Okay, that's a, all right, so we'll leave Jennings and Tisdale on that board and, and no other vacancies.
It's sure.
Yep.
Uh, does the motion include, uh, continuing to have Commissioner Sleep as the alternate?
I'd be glad to do that.
Yep, thank you for getting that. So Jennings, Tisdale, Sleep are on that. Uh, public defender board.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Valerie Miners and Brad Gordon have been prior members and they have both requested to continue, uh, to serve as the lay members. Right now it's, um, I think Bob and Rick are also.
And I would, I would continue it if so desired, happy to stay as well.
Okay. You good with that, Richard?
Yeah.
Okay, and so then that board will have, uh, Ewing, Tisdale, Miners, and Gordon on it. Revolving loan fund.
Mr. Chairman, the, uh, four non, three non-commissioner members have all indicated willingness to serve. Also addition Commissioner Tisdale and planning.
Happy to stay.
You okay with that? Yep, okay. So. That will leave Flanagan, Tisdale, Holwood, Whitlock, and Rosenbaum.
Yes.
Right, okay. Black Hills Council, local governments. I'm okay with staying on that one. That, that's the pleasure of the board.
And Richard is alternate?
I was, uh, I'd be glad to do that, too. I'd certainly support one of those.
Okay, so we'll leave Jennings and Sleep on that.
I would be happy to continue on L A P C.
Any other, any? Issues with that? Natural Resource Committee, um, I've been on that, I'm willing to stay on that, too.
Hey, that's good.
JSC Board, uh, currently Ewing and Sheriff Dean.
I think you have to take that position as chair.
Really? Oh, good for me. And Sheriff Dean is also on there then?
Yes.
Library Board.
Happy to stay.
Uh, Spriffish Economic Development, uh, I'm okay with staying on that one also. Unless the board has other interests?
Brandon is alternate.
Brandon is alternate, sounds good to me. This one?
Yeah.
Yep. Uh, lead debit economic development, I've been doing that one and I'm, I'm willing to stay on that one also.
Yeah, sounds good.
Uh, the Black Hills Regional Multiple Use Coalition, uh, they are paused right now, so I'd, we can certainly appoint somebody, I don't know that that would be, have any, any use for.
You'll come back.
Well, it's still functioning, they're just not meeting, so, uh, we should probably have a board, somebody, uh, nominated on there or appointed on there in case they do kick back up.
Chris, I think Sleep and Jennings would be good for that one.
Um, I'm already on there for another position.
I can be the alternate.
Okay. State Division of Forestry Contact Person.
He's the chairman.
That's how you get to do that one, too, huh? Well, it's interesting, I always save these till the end.
James Rowan now.
Western Community Action, Ida Marie is, uh, willing to, to, to continue on that, she does an excellent job on that position.
Yep, I would definitely, uh, agree there.
Hazardous Materials Coordinator. Anybody else want to remove hazardous materials around, Paul?
No, I think Paul would, Paul's fine, he needs to remain.
Okay, we have the slate of committee appointments before us, we're going to pay a motion to approve those. So moved. Second, second. Moved by Tisdale, we'll take Flanagan second on that, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for working through those, your willingness to serve. Uh, mandatory open meetings laws. You want to give us a little schooling on that?
Mr. Chairman, uh, legislature passed a law last year that requires each year that you have a review of the open meeting laws, and so we're, we did that actually last year, you didn't need to do it, but this is the compulsory time to do it, and it'll be so reflected in the minutes. And there's the packet is in your, in your, in your binders. We go through it periodically throughout the year. I don't know if I need to cover anything in particular, if you have any questions, please let me know. Nothing has, has changed as of yet. Uh, I think the legislature is looking at a package of bills from, at least, at the very least, D H E's office, uh, to make some amendments to the open meeting rules, so we'll have to wait and see what those are.
There are several bills that are coming down the turnpike on open meetings. Anybody have any questions on how to comply with open meeting laws? Let me think. Thank you, Mr. Outko, for keeping us on task there on, on open meetings.
I may ask.
I think that takes care of all the general business. Sheriff Dean?
Yeah. Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
I'm happy to report, uh, folks, and I've got the numbers for our, uh, revenue from housing and dealing with federal inmates for two thousand and twenty-five, and we came in at approximately one million, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. So, uh, I'd like to acknowledge, uh, the efforts of our staff and all those that worked so hard to do our part in helping to meet that business model, their, their effort is considerable, I can assure you. Very proud of the, the work that they've done. I'm also happy to announce that the, uh, the, uh, federal contract that we've been working on for quite some time has come to an end. I signed off on that on behalf of Lawrence County, uh, recently. Our, uh, housing had been set at seventy dollars per day per inmate. Effective February first, it would be, it will be one hundred and seventeen dollars per day per inmate, that represents a sixty-seven point one-four percent increase. Our guard and transport fee had been set at twenty-six dollars per hour. Uh, effective February first, it will move forward to thirty-five dollars and ninety-two cents per hour, which reflects a thirty-eight point one-five percent increase. There are, uh, two ways that this is incredibly impactful, uh, for Lawrence County and in particular Lawrence County, uh, taxpayers. The first one is, uh, something that should be obvious to all of us, is money. The potential here is, uh, to increase considerably the amount of revenue that we bring in. Uh, the increase that we could realize is, uh, considerable dollars, it's over a million. Give you some idea of where we were performing, um, we had a, an A D P or an average daily population of fifty-nine inmates from September first through December thirty-first. So just in that span of time, uh, we brought in approximately five hundred thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. So our facility is functioning exactly as we had hoped. In fact, we're exceeding our business model by a substantial amount, as we talked about, uh, at budget time. The one thing that, uh, e- especially being so much in the infancy of our building, one thing that I cannot, uh, yet plan for is, uh, exceeding our business model to the extent that we are, and so, uh, we talked as far back as two thousand and twenty-three about, um, should we be in the, the favorable position that we're in, uh, there will be more cost. So it's not all profit, if you're going to house, uh, considerably more inmates than what you had anticipated, costs are going to be a little bit harder to get, get our hands around. But we are doing exceptionally well. In regards to costs, um, I need to say, uh, this much. Starting in two thousand and twenty-three, um, I had an idea of what it would take to get to this number or close to it. And I brought before the board, uh, my thoughts in that regard. And if you would recall specifically that entail the case manager, uh, hiring a nurse and, uh, and a positions assistant on a part-time basis. I'm relieved that things worked out as what I had anticipated, but I am extremely grateful for the trust that this board put not only in me and also in my staff. This was an incredible endeavor, and sometimes I wonder if you really understand how much it meant to all of us that the board trusted us with the taxpayer funds and with our understanding how things would, would move forward. So in that sense, this kind of brings, brings to a point of some closure in this process that we've been after for many, many years, nearly seven in total. Having said that, there is another advantage that this new rate offers for Lawrence County, should for some reason, the numbers of available federal inmates or those that are in need of a housing location, should those numbers go down, we no longer have to hit that same number of 40. Now we could meet our business model at roughly 24 inmates per month. I don't see that that has an application in the immediate future, but none of us can predict what it's going to be like in 10 or 15 years as we're coming towards the end of our debt service payments, and I consider that to be a considerable victory as well. Also, someone else, we talked about the case manager, we talked about the medical staff, those positions certainly contributed to the success of our renegotiation. However, one more person really needs to be recognized, and that is Jamie Paseko Olson. I came to you in the summer and expressed my belief in her, her unique skillset, and at the end of the day, we can, we can accumulate all of the data that we need to, we can make all of the right moves, but somebody had to be charged with the responsibility of reducing that information to a 27-page application, and she was the one that was tasked with that burden, and she performed wonderfully. So that's what I have for you today, everything else is going very well, today is an important day in Lawrence County's history, I believe, it's not often that we have opportunities as stewards of the funds in Lawrence County to have an impact on those funds that literally translates into the millions, so I thank you for the support, and that's what I have unless you have questions for me.
The length of that contract, is that just an open-ended contract or is there a term on there?
We are eligible to renegotiate the contract every three years, should we decide not to renegotiate it, for whatever reason, I can't quite envision, but it would stay in place.
Previously, you talked about finding that comfortable occupancy rate for the prison, do you feel that you're kind of zeroed in on that point, or?
I, I feel like we're, we're in tune with our employees and that number, that number kind of oscillates a little bit because of our local inmate population, and it kind of sits somewhere between 105 and 85, and I'm, I'm well convinced that we operate with a little bit more peace when it's 85, but I'm also convinced that our staff can handle the 105 when we hit there. So in terms of our intent, our staff is on board, everybody understands our mission, and we will continue to house to the level of safety and happens and see that everybody would anticipate, but we do understand that at this point in Lawrence County's history, it's important that we bring in as much money as we can to relieve the taxpayer burden on the debt service.
So I just, you know, this, your, your office has gone through tremendous transition in the last three years, transitioning into that building, starting out the building process, the planning and the design and being involved in that, and then getting moved and starting out with a new building, with that agency, your, your staff has done a tremendous job in making all that happen, I, I can't imagine it going more seamlessly than where it has, so commend all of you in that department.
It's most appreciated.
Thank you very much, appreciate your efforts. Thank you very much. Any other, yep, thank you. All right, Mr. Bay, Road Superintendent. Well, that's good news. Good morning. Good morning. Sorry. Good to see you, John.
Okay, I don't have a tremendous volunteer for you gentlemen today, I do have a utility permit, this is for Celerity Internet, I'm told that this is going to be the conclusion or close to the conclusion of their project for a short section of road, Hillsby Road, the section of Homestead and West 14, they've got all other utilities on all the other roads, it just disconnects those two sections, so as you can see, they do have a, they do have the cost of, the estimated cost of that utility in the right way, and that's $12,000, I put that again in there as a condition of the permit would be to issue a bond and the amount of $12,000 towards County, so all the other conditions are the same as we've been implementing on all of them, so with that, I would recommend that we, we allow this, this utility permit.
Mr. Ewing?
I'll make a motion to follow the, I have a superintendent's recommendation and along with a bond for 12,000. While we're on that topic there, I've been forgetting to bring this up, but there's a individual on the Homestead Road up there, there's been a big spool of wire sitting in, is basically right by his driveway for all fall, and now into the winter, and he is, he's questioning why it has to be sitting there, they're not doing anything with it, so I'm just bringing it up.
I will reach out to them, all of our, in the, all of our conditions have been driven by complaints by the public, and I will say that we haven't had any complaints in, in the last several months on this project since they moved over to the north side of the county system, but I will bring that to their attention, I'll make sure that.
You're probably familiar with it, aren't you?
I, yeah, I'm pretty sure I know where you're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make sure that all, all the reads removed from the previous projects. I'll second that motion.
Moved by Ewing and seconded by Tisdale to follow recommendations including the $12,000 bond for the utility permit. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The second thing I have on the agenda is a, this is for the President's Approach, this is Mr. Carl Shank, I do believe that he has met with planning and zoning, and he's in the process of possibly redesigning his plat, but I would like to address this approach, I've met with Mr. Shank, I've also met with representatives from Game Vision Parks, the location that he has applied for is not an ideal location for a permit, I would like to at least go through the formal process of removing this site, with that being said, I would, I would recommend denying this permit, and maybe that would, that would help proceed with his planning and getting his approach in a more desirable location.
Yes. Well, with, this will come up, applying and zoning also, but when the issue came before planning and zoning, we voted to continue it because we needed to address the approach.
The issues, yeah, I would just like to remove this site as a, as a possible location, I, I think that is his intent, I have, I was not able to connect with him after the planning and zoning meeting, so I don't know, my last correspondence with him was that he wanted to proceed with this application, but that was before that, but I would like to remove this as a site.
Move, you deny. Follow recommendation. Okay, it's been moved following recommendations and deny the permit for Mr. Shank, any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Permit is denied.
Inside it is, I'm not denying questions.
Chairman?
Yep.
I believe that Mr. Shank, as well, did meet with Amber and Surveyor Brad Limbo on Friday after last, we explained it in zoning, so I think there was some misunderstandings about some alignments and so forth, so I think you might see a, a, a updated request coming in.
Okay, yep, that's fine. Good.
I think there was some misunderstanding about that lot lines had to be straight, maybe because of East River and section lines and things like that, and, and so I think they were apprised, there's, is indeed flexibility in the shapes of the lots, and there's areas that they're interested in preserving, and so, yeah, I think there'd be a better result.
And the only other thing I have is an update on our two structures down in the Maitland Christianson Drive area, they're both opened at this time, Christianson Drive is, is still to be finished in the spring as far as the paving of that surface goes, the Maitland Road is now opened, but they are still continuing to do the grade work, I think we have a meeting on Thursday to do a final walkthrough, I think they're planning on being done by the end of the week as far as completion of that project, aside from seeding and things like that will be taken care of in the spring, but both roads are currently open.
Commissioner Ewing?
Mr. Chairman, John, are the, on that Christianson-Maitland one, are they going to put guardrail up?
No, there's no design for guardrails on this, both of the previous structures are 23 feet wide, surface tops, I believe that this time, I think Christianson Drive is 46 feet wide.
Okay.
Astro standards require 10 feet of clear zone at the very minimum, we have 11 feet, as the speed limits increase, then those clear zones increase, of course, but we, we fall into the minimum category, I believe the Maitland structure is 68 feet wide, although the road does go through it as, as, on a skew, we still maintain that minimum of 10 feet of clear zone, in fact, we, we are more than the minimum, so guardrails are not required by standard, and the problem with the box cover, there's really nowhere to attach a guardrail, the top of box cover is only nine inches thick, typically there's two foot of cover, two foot of cover is not enough to, to maintain a, a guardrail post, so.
I just had an individual ask about it, and I said they'd check.
We've had several individuals ask about it, so should not be an issue, it meets requirements.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, I haven't been through there, but what have, what have we done with the stop signs, I know that was.
Stop signs are back in place, on Maitland, on Maitland, and at the intersection of Maitland and Christianson Drive.
Three-way stop.
Three-way stop. They're back in place, they're well marked, we actually included red lights on those stop signs, so there's flashing red lights along with them, I personally witnessed people run them, but I mean, we're not responsible nor can we control everybody's driving habits either, so.
Understand.
They are in place and Lawrence County is covered at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions?
All right, seeing none, thank you, Mr. Bay.
Thank you.
We'll take a few minute break here, allow the planning and zoning director to set up and check her phone, think about what she's going to. I will pause the recording while we transition. All right, we'll call, call back to order. And next up is planning and zoning.
I think all we have is plans today.
May I speak real quick?
Yep.
I certainly appreciate Dave Heck and his weekly reports and his ability to go and talk to these people and come up with a plan prior to planning and zoning, I had this with a woman the other day, and he's quite tickled with the whole new process too, so.
I think it's working really well.
We appreciate the weed board changing their policy and allowing him to be a little more proactive now.
Yeah. All right, so the first one is 2026-4 preliminary and final for Corey Olverston and Donamania.
Did three get hold?
Two first. Oh, I just got a order. Oh, I am, sorry, one, two, yes, I'm the other order. Okay, we'll go back.
See, that, we can understand the whole math issue. If we don't want to start at one.
Oh, one, oh, it's because one, you guys didn't have to sign, that's why, two, we actually started with two.
Okay.
Apple screens. This one is just a combining of the lot, so they own lots 11 and 12, and they're combining them into one, so it's a pretty easy one, their house sits on this lot here, they bought this lot here, they just want to make it all one big block.
Approve the preliminary on the file.
It's been moved to approve the preliminary and final for 26, 2026-1, then moved by Tisdale, seconded by Sleep, or, I won't give it to Flanagan since the delay was there.
Okay.
Sure you have. Any questions on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So now we would be 2026-3.
Yep, so this is for Jeff Miller, this one is a layout plan only, so we don't have, you know, road profiles or any of that stuff yet, we wouldn't usually see that until the preliminary plan, this was, if you remember at planning and zoning, we had quite a discussion on access with this one, they're asking for a 66-foot private access and utility easement, so it's not a public access, it's private, and then you had, had some concern about, you know, with that cul-de-sac length, are they going to have an approved emergency access out and, and some of that stuff, so you guys had asked those questions. So you guys had asked those questions and they were going to get some more information before the preliminary plat comes in to make sure that it answers those questions. How I understand it after talking to them a little bit more is their intention is to make this whole thing private. So it will not be a public roadway. They'll take, maintain it and do everything. And then the back of this, where you see this gravel roadway, this does end up coming out up into Centennial Vista subdivision, which is the neighboring subdivision. There is an access point into that subdivision. It's been in place for a number of years and it was supposed to be for emergency purposes of some sort over time. This, from what I understand, this roadway is like it's gravelled all the way through. It's, you can travel it now. It sounds like it's already been done, but they just didn't have it totally drawn out, you know, like how wide it is and all of that stuff. So they do know they have to go, go back and get that information. And then there is a 66-foot private access easement already in place from a previous plat. So that'll be, that will still be in place. That's going this way. And then Doc's Place goes back out to Pendle Road. So that's those, these lots here. The landowner does own the remainder of this back in here. You know how that goes. They may or may not do something with it in the future. I don't know at this point. I haven't heard one way or another. The property back here is where that big tower sits. That he, he has a house in a tower, the tower back there. So that's kind of what's going on with this one. It is just a layout. So obviously after the last meeting, they knew that they had to work on, you know, fire plan stuff, the road stuff, all of that, which you guys had asked them for more information. So that's really it with this one.
Let's go back to planning and zoning.
Yeah, it goes back to planning and zoning when they get all of that.
Commissioner, you?
I'm going to recuse myself because I can't support this. And so I'm going to stay out of this.
And you're recusing yourself because you're a neighboring landlord.
Yep. And I don't agree with what's going on, so.
But, and so did we identify everything that, that planning and zoning? But there was also a question about private drive versus private access.
Yep. So we do. I printed the minutes just because she just finished them. So we have in here. We have, you know, Brad Limbo, he gave his recommendation, existing road. So Tisdale's, we have Tisdale's comments in there about when it went through the city of Spearfish. That there's some concern about it being re-subdivided again. That was in there. He would like to see the full intention of the landowner. So that concern is in there. TJ's concerns regarding the cul-de-sac. And if it, I had answered private access. That's kind of what they have to determine if it's going to be private access or not. And then Shank asked about the difference between private access and the driveway. And that's up to them to decide how they're going to present it. But I think they could do either. It wouldn't really matter because it's still private, no matter what. What was the other one?
And that, then that could be changed, whether it's private or public could be changed if they further developed lots to the south. Just because they put it in as private to start with doesn't mean.
Doesn't mean, yeah, they could come back. Well, the only thing is they would have to get permission to go public or if it gets moved to a road district. Then it automatically gets public. So what else do we add here? The two points of access.
We wanted that road showed on the plat.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I said, showing that two points of access. And then the private driveway services, the number of lots, would it be appropriate to do that? And I talked to Limbo about it. He said he would have to talk to the client to decide what, you know, if they're going to gate it or not gate it, or kind of what their thought process is there. So I think everything was in the minutes that you guys had kind of questioned. So in the motion, we had that the concern should be addressed prior to the preliminary plat, length of cul-de-sac grades, emergency access out, dedicated private driveways and access. However, they choose to go forward, they need to tell us. You know, so, so it's clear.
Anything further from the board of any concerns for the layout plan?
No, we could come back to P and Z myself.
Okay. Move on to.
I think normally you do a motion.
Approve the layout plan.
Yeah.
Anybody have a motion to do that?
I need the ordinance. So move to approve.
And moved to approve the layout plan as presented. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Okay. Second by Flanagan.
Yep. Does the motion incorporate all those concerns that planning and zoning?
Absolutely. Those plus.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Smoky Mountain Ranch. Okay, so this one is a preliminary plat for lot 7A of Smoky Mountain Ranch. And basically what they're doing is the roadway, the old roadway. That is, well, it's the old railroad right away that goes behind Smoky Mountain Ranch is being platted into lot seven. This house right here wanted that access. And then the landowner up above said, okay, we'll do that. But I also want you to take the road that's in your subdivision so that it wasn't part of his lot anymore. So they did a lot line change. And that's why you see this little kind of finger in here. It's, it's the roadway of the Smoky Mountain Ranch loop, basically, that comes from Kirk City Road.
Yeah, which was the former railroad right away.
There's some.
Now been abandoned.
Yeah, it's been abandoned and there's a roadway there now to import some of it.
Yes.
Motion to approve the preliminary in the file.
Do we need to be exempt?
Yes, you guys.
Motion that is exempt.
Signed it. And moved by Tisdale, seconded by Ewing to make it exempt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Motion to approve the preliminary in the file. Signed it.
And moved by Tisdale, seconded by Ewing to approve the preliminary and final of 2026 dash four. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five.
Number five. This is for Apple Springs subdivision as well. And basically they are taking half of lot 12, which is 12 and 13. Taking half of 12 and part of 12 is going to 11 and part of 12 is going to 13. So they're getting rid of a lot underneath there.
From three to two.
Yep.
Motion to approve the preliminary in the final.
Signed it. It's been moved to approve the preliminary and final of 2026 dash five. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
So Shank got pulled and I heard online that, I think Bruce explained to you kind of what they decided. We're, we're going to be seeing a new plat, but it'll go back through the process for planning and zoning next, next week.
This is the one that dealt with the road.
Yep. And they're, they're working on it, so.
Number seven.
This one is for Lynn and Jody Jensen, lots one through eight, Whitewood Heights Estates. This one is off of Kirk City Road. And we will pull this one. So this is just a sketch plat to give you some general idea. They're looking at, so it's coming off of a dedicated 66-foot access and utility easement that's already in existence out to Kirk City Road. And that is going to go, I guess, through the Crook Mountain Yak Ranch subdivision that had occurred. And then there's going to be a loop road that comes in and out. It's going to be private access, utility easement. It is a sketch plat, so they're still working on, you know, road grades and kind of what's going to transpire in there. Obviously it'll change from this plat to the preliminary. It always does once they start working on actual road profiles. Needs the ordinance. It's going to be private. That's kind of a new, you know, having that private access versus public access. Now they do understand that if they would decide to change it over to a road district at some point in time, then, then it becomes a public right.
Mr. Diver, do you have anything to add? He's doing.
He was on. He just texted me.
Randy?
Planning and zoning recommended approval too, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
For a, for a layout.
Is he planning on? I just, I don't know. Must be busy.
Hey, it's the pleasure of the board. Second. To approve by Tisdale, seconded by Ewing to approve the layout plan for 2026 dash seven. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to approve the layout plan.
Do you want to sign this now or do you want to wait?
I'll wait. Discussion of Powder House commercial.
Okay, you're going to do it today? Okay, I was like, I don't see this. Oh, okay. Perfect. If you want to have them all come in.
Right.
So I guess real quick, I'll, I'll let these guys go through it. But basically when we did the building permits for the new commercial storage building, basically that's going up there. As part of that, we came to kind of a, an agreement and we had to talk to the landowners to figure out how we were going to count those units towards their overall allowed units. So in their original master plan back from, what, 2005, it basically stated 72 acres slash units. Well, what does that mean? Because is it, once the 72 acres is done, that's fine? Or is it 72 units? But it, we don't really know what that meant. So we asked for some clarification. And as part of that process, they went back to their engineers and the engineers have come up with a, we'll say a formula that kind of says, well, based on the usage of it, whatever's going into the property. So if there's no bathrooms, no usage going into the system, that's just going to be, that's easy. It's the ones that have like bathrooms or some sort of usage in it that we had to have a number to go with it. And so basically they've come up with that formula uncomfortably using that formula as long as I do think we have to go through the proper procedure though to update the master plan. So it specifies what the formula is. So going forward, there's no question. If this is what it is, this is what we're going to go by. So it's really just to you guys, if you are comfortable with the formula that they've provided or not. And if you're comfortable with utilizing that process. So I think what I would do is they can't have more than 72 acres worth of commercial development, we'll say land use. But then the units would be based on what the usage is. If that, that's maybe the quick and easy way to explain it. There's more if, if you want to, but.
Uh, this presentation was made at planning and zoning last weekend. I think there was a recommendation, sort of, you, you agreed with it. And I think the idea was is that it was going to be memorialized or put in a final form and then presented to planning and zoning again at your next meeting. By way of update, it was transpired so far. And we've got folks, Mr. Bavan is here, Greg Ernst is here. I think A2S is represented as well, if you have any questions.
Okay. Guys, like to present anything?
Thank you. As I understand it, today is just kind of an informational meeting. We are going to prepare an amendment to the master plan using a table that's been accepted by the state of South Dakota with these formulas in it. And then give that to the planning and zoning and to you for further consideration. Mostly we're here for, if there are any questions at this stage. And if you'd like to give maybe a short presentation on, you know, what, what we're doing here and equivalency tables. That might be helpful.
Yeah, so essentially kind of our goal is to define the, the usage of.
Can you state your name first, please?
Christian Heiner for the units. So our, our goal is to first define what we would consider as average usage for commercial lots that was ever laid out in the master plan. So I know for, for residential lots, we, we have that defined as 300 gallons per day. So we're going to use that as a basis for the commercial lots. For, for one, one commercial unit, consider that as 300 gallons per day. And then scale that up or down based on state accepted design criteria based on, you know, the smaller usage for, say, the commercial or for the, for the storage units, restaurants or larger demand customers would have a, would have a higher usage. And so scale that, scale that one commercial unit up or down based on the, the predicted average day demand for, for each user, so.
And, and I believe also that as, as part of the consideration here, that the CID itself has been involved in these discussions and I think has been recommending these values to be assigned as well. Ultimately, they're the ones that have to maintain the systems that have to treat the effluents, provide the water, right? So they are on board. Is that correct, John?
Yes.
I can, I can give another example to them.
So these, what, what other, you, you don't really know what other commercial properties there might be. There really isn't any right now. It's just the storage units that, that were approved to have some, some bathroom facilities in there. But they're going to, is there the possibility of having a trap there to dump campers into the sewer? Is that?
No, there's no traps inside the storage units for that. And there's the wash sink.
Yeah.
Is all you're going to have in here.
Yep.
And there, there, there are floor drains, but those would be a separate, those, those would go through an oil-water separator. And then they would be part of the stormwater system. They wouldn't be treated, treated wastewater.
And the short-term rentals that are at Powderhouse Pass are not a commercial. And so they don't apply to this new amendments or amendment. Correct?
Correct.
But remember, Eric, we did do. We did, we updated it. So at least we're taking those high numbers into account now with sewage, which is helping. I, I think it's relieving some of the pressures that you had previously.
Because it enters into the total capacity and the total capacity is what's going to affect the, the commercial amendments.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions that we have for these gentlemen? Or things to consider as we move forward in this process?
Yep. So what we'll end up doing, we'll have them follow the regular amendment procedure to master plan PUD. So they'll have to hold a public hearing. And then it'll go through the regular process, planning and zoning county commission. That's what we'll have. So for the next meeting, the goal is to have that kind of in detail so we can have it on the next agenda as it'll have to be informational first, then public hearing, planning and zoning, public hearing, county commission. So we'll follow that same process.
We'll all be well versed in this by the time we're done.
You will.
Yes, we will.
Yep. Okay, I think that's. I don't think we made a motion last time. We just kind of said that, yes, it's okay to keep going forward with the new process so that we can get it in place.
And nothing else from your office?
I don't think so. Do you guys have any questions, Bernie?
All right, items from the public. Anybody would like to address, do you like your name and address, please?
Yomi Marchak, 19941 Goffler Woods, Spearfish. I just would like to make the comment that I'm encouraged to see residents applying for different positions and committees and the boards that we have because so many times people can complain, but they don't do anything about it. So I was pleased to hear that there were multiple applicants with different positions.
Yep, as am I. Anything else from the public?
Yeah, Ron Anderson, 2977 Roberts Rooster Road. And I would, I, I applied and just trying to get my name in the hat and try and help the county and be a part of the solution and I, I have experience. And I was kind of surprised at how it just got shuffled off and everybody appointed each other and there was no new blood brought in as far as I could see. And so I, I'm a little surprised at that, I guess. I don't know. I didn't get a call. I didn't get any response that I put an application in and you know, no discussion, no anything. I find that troubling, I guess, in a sense.
Sure. Yeah. I don't usually acknowledge them when I get them, but what I would have done today, now you're here, is I would have followed up after the meeting today to let you know the result. So I've never had an issue with that in the past. Your, your letter was presented.
Yeah, your, your letter was in the packet. We're familiar with your, your application. Yeah, your, your letter was in the packet, we're familiar with your, your application. And I don't know if you're familiar with how the, the planning and zoning board, there are terms from our, our members on there and, and the only terms that were up were the two county commissioners that were in there. So they got reappointed, there was no other openings for general public, I guess I would call them.
And I think next year there's one or two up, isn't there?
I would think so, because they're three-year terms, so.
Application in, but it just. It, it just got put back to the existing people. Positions were open.
No, no, they're five-year terms. And the only one, one comes up for an opening and then they don't, that's for more people to come in. I don't, I'm assuming you keep track of the applications from the past and, I don't know.
Yeah, well, we usually have people reapply each year or, you know, when they're interested, right? And so I think, I don't hold me to this, but looking at my schedule, it looks like Mike Rayland's term ends at the end of this year, TJ's term ends at the end of this year, they were filling terms of, of Tom and then ultimately of Amy Gilpin as well. So I think, I think that there are two positions open for next year.
There was a position open that I applied for.
No, no, not, not for 26, there will be for 27, there'll be possibly two. The only openings this year, we reappoint any county commissioners that are on committees, we had reappointed every year and, yeah, but as far as public participation, that's on a limited basis based on their term. So like he said, there's two positions available for 27, so.
Thank you for your interest.
Markworth, 1912 Cowboy Lane. So to clarify that, that you reappointed yourself, you did not have the option to put a citizen other than a county commissioner on there?
Sir, can you state your name again for the record, we have it for minutes.
We didn't quite catch your name.
Doug Markworth.
Markworth, can you spell that for us?
M-A-R-K-W-O-R-T-H.
Thank you.
You did not have that option.
We have the option, wow, Bruce, why don't you answer this?
I think the, 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 oh, the, this case, the, the planning is only supposed to have seven members. With at least one being a county commissioner, state law doesn't prohibit nor does our board, our, our bylaws, that's what I was trying to say, prohibit an additional county commissioners, you can have more, have to have at least one, seven members. You were obviously a, a member of planning and zoning apart from being a county commissioner, so that was your term, your term was up, but you're appointed as a county commissioner, so we have seven members, two of which are county commissioners, if that makes sense. So there was technically, I guess, a position open, but it was filled by a county commissioner as has been the past, what, last year?
And it's been working well with transition to give information to this board.
Thank you for your input on that, so you did have the option to appoint a citizen, evidently.
Yeah.
So that was rather misleading, was it not, a minute ago?
Uh, well, I, I don't know. Didn't intend to be misleading. We have, we have had two county commissioners on there, we felt it was valuable to have two county commissioners to, to bring forth the information from planning and zoning to the board of commissioners.
So one out of five can't relay information, it would take two to have the same information.
We're not going to enter into an argument about.
Oh no, I'm trying to clarify, you brought it up. So let me make a point from a citizen that's being reflected, I'll just, I'm only speaking for myself. It's fascinating that in a county nearing 30,000, that the five of you are on so many boards and when we have private individuals, some I know, some I don't, who I would speak for, the ones I know, say, no, these five people know more so much that we shouldn't let new blood into this. That is fascinating, the concentration on these boards. You had the ability, you just said, to have a county commissioner, as was required, and to let a citizen on, railroaded right through it. So that's fascinating. Now, I understand why it's happening because we have relatively small number, relatively small number, I've been following on the recorded and I look and it's a very small number of our citizens who go on and watch the meetings as a recording, it's disappointing. So I can see why it's happened over time. And I don't know if anybody's ever spoken, but to me, what the epitome of arrogance to say, we five people out of a county of 30,000, we know more, we're the ones, it works so well, let's keep reappointing ourselves, let's control it. So I know you're not going to take action, but I think it's important you said, so thank you for your time.
Too late, oh, thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, we'll close the public comment session, move on to items from the commissioners. January 27th, next meeting is January 27th, two weeks, same time, same place. Okay, I'll move to adjourn, we'll call her good, thank you everybody for attending and thank you for your interest in the government.